Call the meeting to order of the Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees for June 2016. Please help me start the meeting with our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first item of business is roll call and recognition of visitors.
The seed means visitors include Dr. Mickey McLeod, Kathy Anderson, Dr. Roberta Everslaj, and Ron Contino.
I think we have a couple more student visitors who got here. We just got our photo taken, so we'll see them during the awards. Awards and recognitions, Dr. Sopich.
Trustee, we would like to pass that on to Andy Anderson in his last official meeting.
Thank you. I'm delighted to introduce Mark Coward in, who has some awards to present to some students for sustainability. Yeah, you have to go over there. I could go over there, too, but that will see you. And the sustainability awards, the mark that you've seen on campus, one piece has been recently restored from a tornado. Personally restored, anyway. Thank you. Mark?
Yeah, I'm Mark Coward. Professor of art. And I've done a project last, well, we've done it three times now. This is the third time. Kind of a collaboration between the Center for Sustainability, the Student Sustainability Committee, and my sculpture two classes. So we built a competition where my students, all of my students in the class, built a proposal for a sculpture that would be on campus that would deal with sustainability, either through repurposed materials or conceptually. And sometimes both, most cases, both. So two of the students who were successful in that endeavor this semester, this last spring, whose pieces are on campus now are here. Alex Anderson, right, and Megan Stroll. They both have sculptures on campus. I don't know, I haven't done this before. I don't know how much information you want me to give, but I'm presenting them to you for recognition.
How about if we have each of them tell us a little bit about your sculpture? And I first should introduce you as Andy Anderson's nephew.
That's great.
And also the winner of the League of Innovation, 19 community colleges that we're part of. You won the top, the Best in Show, which sounds like a dog show, and I know this wasn't.
I thought the same.
Best in Show award, first time in the history of Johnson County Community College, I believe.
Actually, it's the second time in three years that one of our students has won Best in Show. And I was going to get to that. I have a cattle care.
The work that I proposed and created for the campus, I titled five mass viewing device. It uses all repurposed glass and steel from here on the campus. The steel used to be the baseball stadium risers, I believe. And the glass used to be in the computer desk that someone decided they didn't like anymore. And so I built these five very tall vertical mass which branch out and on the ends of them have these panes of glass in frames that tilt and are angled in various configurations so that when you move around the site that I chose, it, based on your line of sight and the reflections it provides, as well as the continuously changing light, it re-presents your experience of the site in a way you otherwise wouldn't see without that, based on the direction you're looking. So for example, you'll have a reflection of like an upside down horizon almost in some of them as you're moving around behind you while you're looking over the terrain of an entirely different area. So the idea is that you experience your environment in a new way, and it draws your attention to the site in that sense.
Where is it located on campus?
Out next to the college farm, in that sort of drainage ditch area.
Some further recycling.
Okay. Megan?
I did not know I was going to be talking in front of people today. A little unprepared. My piece is made from steel I found in a junkyard, an old table, an old door I found. And it just like represents like the good or the harmful choices that we make. And if you guys have walked past it, it is starting to break down. But that was the purpose of it, was that like, you know, the wood is going to deteriorate and fall down while like the steel aluminum still hold their shape, you know? Like some choices are long-lasting, you know? But my family hasn't seen it yet, so I'm going to go like try and fix it and then I'll let it deteriorate. But my family has to see it first. But yeah.
Thank you.
And I was going to say one thing about the League for Innovation.
Absolutely.
Yeah, this is the 30th annual League for Innovation Student Art Competition. And every one of the board member schools, 19 schools, have five artworks that go represent each college. And so, just so happens that these two students were both part of the five that we had representing us. So I'm proud of them for that as well. But then, yeah, Alex's piece won Best in Show in the competition.
Congratulations. I might identify the other three students that were representatives of the college. Laura Avril, Kyle Kemper, and Edward Tykman were also presented to the League of Innovation. And you are welcome to step out of the meeting at your leisure. Don't feel like you have to stay. You may have other things that you'd rather do. College lobbyist report, we will not, absolutely fine. College lobbyist report, we will not have today. We'll move on to the committee reports. The first item, Audit Committee, I'll just report that the Audit Committee minutes are in the board packet at pages one and two. We reported on the committee meeting last month. So we'll move on to Human Resources. Trustee Ingram.
Absolutely. The Human Resources Committee meeting for June 6th was canceled, but we do have several recommendations. The HR Committee has reviewed the recommended updates to the probationary period policy. The proposed updates will lengthen the standard probationary period to 12 months for employees new to any applicable, applicable, excuse me, regular, nontemporary position. Mr. Chairman, it's the recommendation of the HR Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the proposed amendments to the probationary period policy as shown subsequently in the board packet, and I so move.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to adopt the recommendation of the Human Resources Committee and the college administration. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those no. Motion carries unanimously.
The HR Committee has reviewed the recommended deletion of these special exceptions by job classification policy originally adopted prior to 1994, and the proposed adoption of an updated overtime compensation policy. The first four sections of the special exceptions by job classification policy are duplicative of content currently addressed in other policies. The fifth section is recommended for updates to clarify the calculation of hours worked for the purpose of receiving overtime. Additionally, the fifth section is recommended for transfer to a newly titled overtime compensation policy. Again, it is the recommendation of the HR Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the deletion of the original special exceptions by job classification policy and adoption of an updated overtime compensation policy as is shown subsequently in the board packet, and I so move.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to revise the policies and shorten the name by 40 percent. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. That concludes my report.
Learning Quality Committee, Trustee Cross.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. The Learning Quality Committee meeting on June 6th, 2016, was canceled. Items were sent to the committee electronically for consideration. Details can be found subsequently in the consent agenda of the June 16th board packet. And then the agreements noted below will be brought forward for approval through consent agenda today, here at tonight's meeting. Specifically, there's a curriculum and program additions and modifications made with respect to the 2016-2017 Kansas Core Outcomes Group, and then an affiliation agreements, various affiliation agreements were in the packet. Mr. Chair, I also wanted to note, I attended a ACCT conference this week, supported by the board and the administration on safeguarding campuses, mostly focusing on the active shooter scenario and then what happened at Virginia Tech and at Umpqua, although various other catastrophic events were discussed. I'm happy to report in a cursory manner that I'm thrilled with our emergency response plan and having it in place. I'm going to meet with staff next week, including Chief Russell and Vice President Larson, to give a more thorough report next week. But I think that we are in pretty good shape. Everybody always has something they could work on. But it was a wonderful conference, and thank you to the board and to the administration for supporting my attendance.
Thank you for taking the time to do that. Next item will be the Management Committee report. Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right. That is just fine. No, 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 not a problem. Just having been on the Board of Trustees for a short period of time, one of the concerns that was brought forward in learning quality when I first began was the Higher Learning Commission credentialing requirements on this campus and also for College Now. And since we did not meet, I asked Dr. Anderson to at least address that before he leaves and kind of give us an update on that, as well as placement testing, specifically the AccuPlacer, just something we would hear.
I thought you were suggesting you can't leave until you fix it.
Till I fix all these things.
That would be correct.
We're about, it's almost all wrapped up. It's really exciting. And if it isn't, well, we'll talk to Mickey soon. Actually, the College Now, the issues that we have with our high school faculty and on-campus faculty in fulfilling the HLC credentials are the same issue, frankly, they're being faced with the entire Higher Learning Commission, all the schools. We were in, I think, very good shape at this point. Last April, to deal with the College Now, our high school faculty first, last April, all the high school district level coordinators received an Excel spreadsheet identifying the credential status of all their faculty that are teaching in College Now. So the deans reviewed all the transcripts from all those faculty to see what, who were lacking credentials and what they needed to do to fulfill those. In May, the JCC college Now liaisons, in each of the divisions, there are college faculty who meet with the high school faculty in their respective disciplines. They've met with them to follow up and cover and answer questions about their credentials if they need additional work. And I believe by now nearly all the College Now liaisons have completed contacting their assigned faculty. Occasionally, even just this week, there are a few high school faculty that have submitted further diploma work or credential work that are still being looked at. But basically, they've all been contacted by now. Perhaps the most important thing immediately is that at this time, all the College Now faculty are good to cover the 2016-2017 school year. So any faculty member in the high schools who are teaching College Now classes are good for this coming academic year. The new HLC requirements will come into effect the subsequent year in 2017. And the College Now faculty who do not have the approved credentials will be expected to submit a plan by December of 2016, this coming December. We are applying, the college is applying for a five-year extension that HLC has allowed us to do that will provide those faculty who need, high school faculty who need additional time to continue their work and complete their credentials. That application I just received, actually, a couple days ago, Laura Lee Stevens has completed that. I want to thank her for tracking down all those credentials and making sure that we have all that data. And we'll get that submitted, actually, before I leave this month. So that'll go into HLC. They'll be receiving these extensions from probably every college in the HLC system. I'm not sure how they'll get, how fast they'll get the answers back to us. But we'll have our application in, and that should be pretty much, you know, pro forma. They should approve that. That extension, again, will give those high school faculty time to get their credentials in order if they choose to continue teaching in the program. In addition, and this is something we just discussed, actually, today with the Board of Regents, the region schools have provided, are trying to better prepare, better provide graduate credits for high school faculty and actually faculty on the college campuses who may need work. And there's now a website on the K-BOR website under concurrent enrollment faculty qualifications. And we'll be sending that link out to the high school faculty that will identify programs at region universities that will help them attain their credentials if they need help. They're allowing the high school faculty and college faculty at the various community colleges to avoid, they won't have to take the GRE in order to take graduate credit to meet those needs. So it'll simplify that process. And that's something that we've been working on through the regions for the past year, and that website is now up. I want to thank Emporia, Pittsburgh, Fort Hayes, well, all the region schools have set some programs out there that should help. So in short, I think for the Higher Learning Commission, the credentialing, you know, there are some faculty who will need to extend their work. They need to have a master's in 18 hours in the field. But on the whole, I think we're in pretty good, pretty good shape. And for this coming year, we, you know, we're good. Yeah.
How many, how many College Now faculty are affected for us?
I don't have the Excel spreadsheet here.
Ballpark.
Probably, probably over a third have some work they need to do, which is a significant number. Many of them have, most of them, well, they all have a master's, frankly. What, frequently what would happen, high school faculty would get their master's in an education in higher ed instead of getting a master's in the discipline. And so they have their master's degree, which back when we were following strictly the K-BOR requirements, we were in alignment with K-BOR. The Kansas Board of Regents wasn't fully in alignment with the Higher Learning Commission, and the Higher Learning Commission wasn't terribly explicit, frankly. When HLC defined their standards more clearly, the Kansas Board of Regents, we had to align, obviously, with our credentialing agency.
We've done our best to comply.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, yeah. And I think in, I would say all of the faculty have some of their credentials. They may not have 18 hours, and that's the part I'm not sure how far away they are would be the issue. But it's a significant number, and it's, it doesn't help anyone in particular, but it is a condition that colleges across the state and across the central state regions are wrestling with. I will say, it does not appear that HLC has any inclination to change their requirement. They're pretty clear on all of this. They're holding, their concession to the challenge that they have posed for us really is the five-year extension. I think it looks like nearly all the faculty are agreeing to move forward in attaining those credentials. So I think we will be in good shape. But it is, it's a challenge, and we're working with it.
Is the five-year extension both for the concurrent, the College Now faculty?
No, that's only for the concurrent College Now faculty.
Not for our own faculty.
Our own faculty will have to have their plans in place and be attaining their credentials by, was it fall 17? They'll have a year. And we've, we're meeting with all those faculty there that if they need to do their work, they're working on those things and have developed their plans to meet those credentialing requirements.
Thank you, Trustee Ingram. I apologize. You told me ahead of time you wanted to include that in your learning quality report.
No, it was my mistake, Mr. Chair. I didn't.
And one more point on the AccuPlacer. Again, placement in college courses has been, we, nearly all, in fact, again, pretty much nationwide, the Compass exam was the standard placement tool. The Compass test has gone away. They're no longer supporting it, so it's not an option after this year. The state has adopted the AccuPlacer, which is another major, in fact, is really the only major player in the market now. We were able to negotiate through the state special rates that'll get us a more affordable placement device. And the Compass, the AccuPlace will be in place for the spring of 2017. That's when the Compass will finally end and the AccuPlace will come into effect. The state has adopted common placement scores that were substantially lower, actually, than what the AccuPlacer even recommended. So our placement scores, our faculty have reviewed those cut scores, and we're using scores that are really more in alignment with what the AccuPlacer itself actually recommends. We'll be monitoring how those placement scores work to make sure that they're actually placing students accurately into primarily Comp One and College Algebra, probably the two major courses that are affected by that. The math faculty are actually developing some, a local test to use in hand with the AccuPlacer to better place students into calculus, because the AccuPlacer tests, I didn't feel had the adequate questions for that. They'll have that developed by the end of the summer. In both the reading, writing, and the math courses, there, we are developing additional alternative assessments so that if a student tests within a range, instead of just automatically being placed into the developmental course, they'll have some alternatives if they're within a certain range to go visit, possibly, you know, with the chair in English or the writing center to review and assess if there isn't, in fact, a chance that they can go ahead and move into Comp One. So one of the recommendations that's come from the state and from AccuPlacer is to adopt multiple measures, which is what the state is really pushing for, and is actually the common, is really a best practice now nationwide, to look at multiple measures so that you use things like the G, the, the, the grade, the GPA, there you go, only the biggest, most common thing in higher ed. But we can use the GPA, their activities and their participation and their record in high school, along with special local measurements, so that we can try and do a better job, make sure that we're placing students and not making them take courses that they may not need. The, I'm also pleased, both the English and the math faculty are looking at ways of assessing, using the, my mind is going totally blank here, using alternative measures so that we can look at how students, or co, I'm sorry, what I'm trying to say is co-requisite remediation, which is another increasingly common usage for placement, so that we can look at better ways of putting a student in a course that they might be in the developmental course along with support, or actually, the gateway course with added support, so that they can move through the gateway courses more quickly. So we have faculty that are looking at those practices at other colleges, and we'll see there's multiple dozens of ways of doing that, and we're exploring that as well. But in a nutshell, though I never say anything in a nutshell, the AccuPlacer will be in effect in the spring of 2017.
The only other comment that I would make, I mean, you gave a really thorough report on the College Now, but just our own faculty as well, as far as the credentialing from the Higher Learning Commission.
They're in better shape than our College Now faculty. There are a few that need to pick up some additional hours, but we're in good shape on campus.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Questions about either the Higher Learning Council's credentialing or our placement tests? Thank you.
Thank you.
I know you can say GPA in Latin.
Actually, I could, but I won't.
All right, we'll move on to the Management Committee. Dr. Cook.
Before, I have to, I have to ask a question. What does it mean when Andy Anderson says "in short" or "in a nutshell"?
Whenever I'm with my teenage grandchildren, and we have a question, they always go to Siri and ask the question.
Even upgraded Siri.
Started it in short, and then you ended it in a nutshell. And I appreciate your passion, and we're going to miss it sincerely. Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Management Committee met at 8:00 AM on Wednesday, June 1st. Trustees Cross and Lindstrom were in attendance with staff. We have a number of recommendations to present. The first is the official newspaper, Mr. Chris Gray, Executive Director of Marketing Communications, that Kansas statute, as you will remember, requires that a college publish legal notice in a newspaper, and that newspaper needs to publish at least 50 weekly issues, 50 times a year. And so we have a recommendation tonight to select our official newspaper. It is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accepts the recommendation of the college administration to designate the legal record, the Shawnee Dispatch and Tri-County News, as official newspapers of the college, and that publication constitutes legal notice on behalf of the Board of Trustees, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to adopt the administration's recommendation for our legal newspapers. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor say yes.
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 Those no. Motion carries unanimously.
Been moved and seconded to adopt the administration's recommendation for our legal newspapers. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those no. Motion carries unanimously.
The next two, and Mr. Chair, if it's okay to take them together, these are, while I don't say any, RFP is routine. These are relationships we've had with past partners over a period of time. The first is with Gilmore and Bell as bond counsel for 2016-17. The second is with retention of Piper Jaffray as financial advisor, if you want to take them separately and prepared.
We can take them together. We can take them together.
And I would make that motion that we approve those two recommendations.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. I'm asking my standard question. Is there a periodic review within our policies of these two particular vendor relationships?
They're reviewed annually by virtue of the fact that it's often presented to the Management Committee. But there's no formalized review as well as as far as a process. These two firms, the college has worked with these firms for many years with a great deal of success. It's not exactly like these are lucrative accounts for them, but nevertheless, they give us incredible service and have performed well for the college.
What did you say, Mr. President? It's not exactly like these are lucrative.
No, lucrative. It's not like a, yeah.
All right. Any other questions or discussion? Not all in favor of the reappointments for bond counsel and for financial advisor? Please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Those no. Motion carries unanimously.
Next three recommendations have to do with year-end transfer of funds. In November 2006, the JCC Foundation established a donor endowment fund to create an endowed professor in healthcare education. Per the letter of agreement, the college will provide a monetary contribution for the balance of the salary and benefit cost resulting from the position in excess of the annual endowment income, which is distributed from the foundation of the college, to the college. In addition, college financial services staff identified two grants which ended with college funds expended in excess of funds received from the grantor. Transfers are proposed for final cleanup and to eliminate deficit balances in the grant fund. Before I make our recommendations and ask for a second, I would say that on these grants, we did have extensive discussion in our management meeting about how we, how we plan for a grant, if it's a three-year grant or a five-year grant. And in these cases, in many cases, there are lingering costs once the grant ends with students that were in the program from the beginning of the grant. And so I'm, I think the Management Committee was, we're pleased with the process steps staff is taking to make sure that when we look at a grant initially, we'll anticipate those and then deal with them in an efficient manner at the close of those, of that grant period. Having said that, it is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation. funds expended in excess of funds received from the grantor. Transfers are proposed for final cleanup and to eliminate deficit balances in the grant fund. Before I make our recommendations and ask for a second, I would say that on these grants, we did have extensive discussion in our management meeting about how we, how we plan for a grant, if it's a three-year grant or a five-year grant. And in these cases, in many cases, there are lingering costs once the grant ends with students that were in the program from the beginning of the grant. And so I'm, I think the management committee was, we're pleased with the process step staff is taking to make sure that when we look at a grant initially, we'll anticipate those and then deal with them in an efficient manner at the close of those, of that grant period. Having said that, it is the recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to authorize the following transfers from the general fund to each of the funds listed below as permitted under Kansas Statute 7-1-614. Transfer of $39,150 subject to June 30, 2016 fiscal year-end payroll adjustments to the endowed professorship restricted fund. Transfer of $27,303.18 to the Kansas Workforce Residential Energy Grant Fund. And transfer of $36,861.73 to the Kansas Workforce Solar Electric Grant Fund. These transfer of funds will be recorded as of June 30, 2016 in the 2015-2016 fiscal year and I'll make that motion.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to make the three transfers described. Any discussion or questions? Not all in favor say yes.
Yes.
Oppose no. Motion carries unanimously.
Next five recommendations are for bids or requests for proposals. Again, each of these have gone under a very specific bid and RFP process review. The first is for the renewal of annual contract for housekeeping services. It is the recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the extension of the annual contract for housekeeping services with ABM Janitorial Services, North Central, Inc., at an expenditure not to exceed $253,347.72 and I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion about the renewal of the ABM Janitorial Services contract? If not, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
Oppose no. Motion carries unanimously.
Next is the renewal of annual contracts for furniture. These contracts were first bid out in 2012. It is the recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the renewal of the annual contracts for furniture with Encompass, the John A. Marshall Company, Scott Rice Office Works and Spaces, Inc., at a total annual expenditure not to exceed $700,000 and I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any questions or discussions regarding the renewal of the furniture contract? Not all in favor say yes.
Yes.
Oppose no. Motion carries unanimously.
Next renewal was for an annual contract for fine paper. Paper purchased under this contract will be used primarily by document services for the printing of instructional support materials, college brochures, and continuing education publications. It is the recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the college administration's recommendation to approve the renewal of the annual contracts for fine paper in amounts not to exceed $125,000 from Midland Paper Packaging and Supplies and $25,000 from Veritiv for a total expenditure not to exceed $150,000 and I'll make that motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
Oppose no.
Next is the annual RFP for the annual contract for beverages. It is the recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the establishment of an annual contract for beverages with Pepsi Beverages Company at an annual expenditure not to exceed $210,000 and I'll make that motion.
Second.
In recognition of former trustee Stewart, I'll state his objection since he likes Coke, but is there any other discussion? Coca-Cola? Any other discussion? Not all in favor say yes.
Yes.
Oppose no. Motion carries unanimously.
The final bid recommendation was for roof replacement and for the Police Academy and the Student Center. It is the recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the low bid of $489,000 from the Quality Roofing Company plus an additional $48,900 to allow for contingencies for possible unforeseen costs for total expenditure not to exceed $537,900 for roof replacements and I'll make that motion.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the low bid for roofing replacements. Is there any discussion? Not all in favor say yes.
Yes.
Oppose no. Motion carries unanimously. I might mention trustee Cook, those renewals are where we did an RFP for multiple years and these are renewals of the winning bidder from the initial year, some were the last year of a four-year contract, some were the second year, but they're, they were all vetted and competitively bid at the initial contract.
Correct. Maybe not so much with the roof companies, but their, the roof projects were part of the long-term construction phase anyway. We've had ongoing work with them, but it's a little different than like with Pepsi and some of the others, the paper and so on and so forth. But they are partners that we have a high deal of confidence in. Another committee work information was presented related to student debt and college finance by Dr. Randy Weber. In fact, we had a very extensive report on costs and if you have interest, I'm sure Dr. Weber would like to have a one-on-one with you with that detail. But Randy, that was really a nice report and greatly appreciated. We administered close to $30 million in grants and aid to students. JCCC financial aid staff improved processes to minimize student debt and to improve the college's default rates. So we had a big discussion about that. Ms. Leers said that the 201617 management budget that was approved by the Board of Trustees at their meeting on May 12, 2016, was subsequently loaded into the college's accounting system in order to facilitate procurement of goods and services for the coming year. Mitch Borchers gave the sole source report and awarded of bids between $25 and $100,000. That summary is found on page 18 of your packet. And Rex Hayes presented the capital infrastructure inventory and investment plan and reviewed our work schedule that particularly those items that are scheduled this summer and as we anticipate completion of those projects by fall. And gave a, that monthly update is reported on page 34 of your packet. That concludes my report and if you have questions, I'd be happy to defer those to trustee Cross.
Questions for either of our management committee members, trustee Cross or trustee Cook. In July, we will vote on the legal budget for publication. It will be published in August and then in, at our August meeting, we will hold our annual public hearing on the budget for 201617 and adopt the legal budget at our August meeting. So if there's anybody that's interested in learning more about the budget and showing up at the public hearing, they will be lonely because we don't get much attention for that, but we, it's very important. So if you want to show up and have some public input in August, that is your opportunity. Next report is from the nominating committee and that again goes back to trustee Cook.
Thank you. We presented to you, get out of one page to the other, the list of nominees at our last meeting for you to consider. There are a couple of things. One, I'd like to make sure that, and it's my error, that we listed Stephanie Sharp as Chair of Collegial Steering and Chair of Audit. That traditionally has been the chairman of the board, so in this case, Mr. Musil would chair Collegial Steering and Mr. Musil will chair the Audit Committee, but Vice Chair in this case, Ms. Sharp, will sit on that committee, serve on that committee. The other thing that we talked about, so we present that to you for your, for your consideration. But a part of that, Mr. Chair, is that our terms have traditionally gone from July 1 to June 30. And with the change in the election for the next election cycle to November, we had asked you to consider as a board that should we make these positions through the first, what, Monday in January?
Second Monday.
Second Monday in January. So I think that, we have two things. One, to approve that list of nominees and then to discuss the length of term. And I guess I would just ask us maybe to discuss that before I make the recommendation.
The effort would be to alter the terms so that they now match the calendar year terms of our election years.
Correct.
Any questions or discussion about, you want to make a motion on either the slate and/or the extension so we can discuss it?
Let me do that. I'm trying to buy time till I found it because I went from Adobe to another, but I have that.
Okay.
It is the recommendation of the nominating committee that the Board of Trustees approve the 2016 slate of officers as changed with the Chairs of Collegial and Audit Committee. Committees and liaisons assignments subject to extension through the second Monday in January of 2018 should the Board subsequently determine that these assignments will run concurrent with the new fall election cycle calendar. And I'll make that motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion about this? It will basically extend the terms of anybody, of those of us two years into our cycle, another six months. And with it goes all the pay and benefits that we receive.
Just a point of discussion, and it's not really any dissent. Someone had raised the issue to me that it may make some sense to keep the structure we have because of, is it the financial year? It's in line with the financial year? So just raising it as a point of discussion. I'm not dissenting from this. I'm fine with whatever we decide here. I'm just raising the issue.
I think it's a legitimate issue that our fiscal year set by the legislature is July 1 to June 30. Our officer years, our Board of Trustee years are now second Monday in January for four years with four up every two years and three up the next two years. So it, there's no, I don't think there's a perfect solution here and I frankly think it makes more sense to fit, fit it in so that somebody, when they're coming into their term on the second Monday of January, then you decide who the officers are going to be for that year rather than having maybe them, they could be replacing four people in the middle of that year.
Well, trustee Cross makes a good point because then, you know, one could say, well, I'm coming in as a board member in the middle of a budget year. And this, the election cycle would just affect us like every two years, but theoretically, if you named somebody to the, to a committee in July, if we keep it the same as it is, take me for example, and I lose the election in November, if I decide to run again, then you have to change the board again with the new people coming on in January. So it's a good point. It's just a matter of where do we want to be, more efficient or less efficient, I guess?
I'm fine with it as it is. I just.
I think having it mesh with the terms of our elected officials is the best way to do it. So I'm going to support the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Oh, no. I vote aye or yes, which I forgot.
I said aye.
I know. I asked you to say aye. Motion carries unanimously. I missed, I forgot my yes and no versus aye and nay. Thank you. Okay, nominating committee has been resolved. The next thing is a treasurer's report. Trustee Lindstrom is not here today. He had the opportunity, was invited to participate in a seminar this week at a very world-renowned, prestigious university. It was either Kansas State or Harvard. I'm trying to remember which one. I think it was Harvard. So trustee Lindstrom is at Harvard for the week, which is a great opportunity for him and I'm sure will rebound at the benefit of this board. So I'll give the treasurer's report based on the summary staff has provided and then Rachel Leers is here for any questions. The board packet contains a treasurer's report for the month ended April 30. It's on pages 38 through 49 of your packet. Items of note, page one of the treasurer's report is the general and post-secondary technical education fund summary. As of April 30, 83% of the college's fiscal year had expired. The college's unencumbered cash balances as of April 30 in all funds was 82.1 million, which is approximately 10.8 million higher than at the same time last year. And the expenditures in all the primary operating funds are within the approved budgetary limits for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2016. It is a recommendation of the college administration that the Board of Trustees approve the treasurer's report for the month ended April 30, 2016, subject to audit, and I would so move.
Second.
Are there any questions for Rachel? Not all in favor say yes.
Yes.
Oppose no. Motion carrying, the treasurer's report will be accepted. Advisory committees, Dr. Sobchak.
Thank you, trustee Musil. On page 49 of your board packet, there is a recommendation regarding our advisory committees. Every year, you're given a rather thick stack of those, of the membership on those advisory committees. And advisory committees are critical to the mission of our college. It bring, it engages members of the community, the academic community, the business community to talk about our programs and to make sure that they are as relevant as can be. And so it's the board's responsibility to review that list and approve it. And I'll read the recommendation. It is a recommendation of the college administration that the Board of Trustees approve the advisory committees contained in supplement B from July 1, 2016 through June 30, 2017.
You all hear a motion?
So move.
Been moved and seconded to adopt the advisory committee report. All in favor, are there any discussion?
Just one point, Mr. Chair. And I'll talk maybe a little bit more about it at my KACC report. But that supplement includes 105 pages. I hope you've looked at it and look at the broad scope of the advisory committees we have and who they represent. I just really applaud the college and the staff in their respective departments with these courses to recruit and sustain the kind of community and leadership we have in all of these programs.
Agreed.
Agreed.
All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Oppose no. Motion carries. Next item is the monthly report to the board by our president, Dr. Sobchak.
Thank you, trustee Musil. You've all received the monthly report to the president and this has about, gosh, I think 30 pages of outstanding information and accomplishments, things that have happened here on our campus and executed by members of the faculty and staff. So I hope you get a chance to read it. There, it's absolutely enlightening and really reflects so well on the college, on our college. There are a couple of issues in the president's report tonight, and this will be a quick one, which is maybe unusual. But the first topic is going to be the, and this is something that everyone wants to talk to, talk about, is the allocation with regarding the state. And in the state of Kansas, the term allocation actually means they, it goes back. Usually think you're being allocated something, but this is, so this must be the second definition under allocation. But this year, we received an allocation of $860,000. That $860,000 is money that we will not receive from the state for our academic year beginning in July 1. We're very fortunate here because we do an excellent job of budgeting and we approach that rather conservatively. And so we will figure out ways to get by without that $860,000. But one must think of what could have been done with those funds to help promote student success as well as programs here on our campus. If you combine that with the allocation from last year, it totals about $1 million. So that's what this college has, has not received over the past two years. We're very fortunate because we all enjoy here a very broad base of local support, but not all community colleges across the state are like that. These types of allocations will affect them in a variety of ways, which we heard about in Hutch. It could be the loss of a program or a position or what have you, but ultimately is something that everyone is kind of feeling, feeling the crunch on. So I wanted to share that with you today with regard to how that allocation is affecting our college.
When you read in the paper about allotments by the governor, it has a real effect on whether it's mental health or Medicaid or higher education region schools or the community colleges now, and that was a significant chunk, $860,000. We did, we had budgeted for it. We were careful, as I think we always try to be, but it is, is an amount we do not have to spend on our mission.
And it should be known, that's 4%. It's 4% of the total amount of funds that come to us and actually less than 1% of our total operating budget. Now, on the other hand, here's some exciting news. Many of you may remember Jim McKay from the Wide World of Sports, right? Certainly one of my favorite shows every Saturday afternoon. Well, JCCC competes around the globe as well. Our teams travel throughout the United States, Europe, and Asia. And in Kansas City, the recent corporate challenge competition, we've had at least 100 employees compete and do incredibly well while representing our college. But this past week, members of our JCCC community participated in the Kansas City International Dragon Boat Festival under the team moniker of JCCC China Hands. This event is a combination, it's kind of like America's Cup and maybe rowing on the Charles River between Harvard and Yale. These rowing teams compete in Kansas City's Brush Creek. So this year, our JCCC China Hands came in first place in the community division. I know we have a member of the team here with us, Melanie Harvey. You can feel free to take a bow.
She's got her medal on.
We're glad you didn't fall in the Brush Creek. But I'd like to read some of the other members on the team. Jeff Anderson, Jared Anderson, Deb Williams, Lynn Beatty, Mark Cowherdon, who was with us earlier, Sarah Subtul, Stephen Rayner, Chi Long Sia, Sheila Philip, Pat Young, and Sam Davis. You know, we'd like to thank you for representing our college and we look forward to a return visit next year after you do a repeat. So best of luck.
I'd be happy to appoint a trustee volunteer for your team next year.
You're not too excited about that, are you?
You know, watching the Royals this week, it was an incredible game. It was in the middle of the eighth inning and you're watching TV and all of a sudden one of our commercials comes on. And it was a great, a great placement because the game was really close and you had high viewership there toward the end of that game. And I want to ask Chris Gray to come to the podium and kind of share with the board some of our recent television executions. So Chris, and we're going to get this set up because we're actually going to show them on the screen.
Thank you, President Sobchak, trustees. This is actually a project that was initiated prior to my arrival on the college and actually Kristy McWard and Vince Miller are here in the audience. So I had the pleasure of really kind of taking So I had the pleasure of really kind of taking this initiative of, of really trying to rebrand the college from a positioning standpoint on TV. And that's a tough thing to do in today's environment with the digital landscape. And if you can think about attention spans, and usually TV commercials are an afterthought when you leave or you disengage or you buzz through. So, so it's a difficult challenge to really position a college in today's TV environment. We took the stance of looking at all the different stations. So it's, it's networks as well as cable providers. So it's Google Fiber, it's AT&amp;T, it's Vian Media. So we're really across all these stations. And we're also addressing a lot of the, the cable and the cord cutters that are out there today, too. And more and more people are disengaging with cable, and we're using a tactic to really serve some of these spots up from a digital standpoint to still kind of capture this audience, knowing that more and more of our students, as well as other adults, are going in that fashion. These are shown in specific areas. I'd love to say I pushed a button in the eighth inning when the game was closed when President Sobchak was watching, it displayed that spot. That wasn't the case, but there is specific channels, networks that are really geared towards the target demographics that the college is trying to engage with. We created two videos. One is going to be more of an overall branding position of what JCC is and the opportunities that it provides students as well as the community. The second is more of a career and technical aspect of it that really showcases the opportunities and the careers that one can capture here at the college through attending. And again, these, it's more of a fast-paced, lively and a punchier spot. They're about 25 seconds in length, and I hope you enjoy.
You want more than just a job. You want a career, something you're passionate about, a journey you'll love. And that journey starts at Johnson County Community College. The journey starts here.
So obviously, that was more of the career and the technical aspect. And this next one is, you know, what we're calling the flipboard campaign. It really is more of a branding. And if you've been out to Children's Mercy Park, you've, you've seen some of these assets. And we're actually starting to carry this through in some of our promotions and the sponsorships we have with, with Sporting Kansas City, as well as some of the other digital ads that we display.
So you might ask, you know, where's the sound and where's the voiceover on that one?
And it's actually done on purpose because it's almost jarred not to hear something. So it's a tactic that's being used more and more to almost kind of draw attention when people don't hear a sound, is an attention grabber in that standpoint. So I'll leave it at that. Say that I think it was a great example of collaboration. So not only our video services department here at the college, as well as the marketing department, that was a collaborative effort also with an outside agency. So we had three distinct groups really coming together, over-processed it, I think, evolved into a great project. So with that, any questions?
Questions? Like, yeah, very impressive.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, it's a, it's a whole different world today when years ago, if you were going to put an ad on, on the TV, you had maybe three stations to choose from, maybe four. So today, you can imagine the complexity. What makes it even more fascinating is that so many people don't even watch TV like that anymore. In fact, this is their primary connection to the world. And so how to go more digital and to utilize this device with regards to marketing and selling, and, and I listen to Pandora, and I've heard more of KU's new business building on Pandora than just about anywhere, is really where things are going. So to be able to get on top of that is so essential in today's world. And it's a real challenge, too. You know, on another topic, we've had, obviously, we've had considerable transition in our college over the past several years. And tonight is a time to say yet one more goodbye. I'd like to recognize Julie Haas. And Julie, I know I didn't really suggest you come to the podium, but I would like to do, for you to come to the podium at this point.
Let the record reflect, she screwed up her face and said, I don't want to come to the podium.
You know, we would like to recognize Julie Haas tonight. You know, she'll be leaving us at, at the end of this month, and her commitment to our college has spans, spanned over 28 years. I mean, that's incredible, almost three decades. Her contribution to the college is long-lasting. As over these years, you have to imagine that every single word that's come out of this college and it's going to the community, and so many words internally, every one of those words has gone through Julie Haas. And I can promise you, there was never a typo, a grammatical mistake, or a misspelled word. And Julie, I want to thank you for that incredible pursuit of excellence. You know, we tried to calculate the number of trustee meetings that Julie has attended. And we came up with maybe around 260 regular meetings. Now, that does not include every one of the subcommittee meetings that Julie also attended because Julie kind of monitored the pulse of the college and was kind of like a walking information source. If you put all that together, Julie has probably attended over 500-plus meetings connected to the trustees alone. And you have to, to comprehend that because of that, because of those, attending those meetings, everything has worked so well with regard to the communication to our trustees as well as the community. So Julie, on behalf of the college, thank you for your service and your commitment to higher education. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to comment from the board? Well spoken by our president.
On anything or?
On, on. Let's limit it to Julie at this point. I will just say, on behalf of the board, to, to try to thank, Chris touched on it a little bit, that how communications and marketing and wordsmithing and delivery of messages has changed over those 28 years Julie has been. You've seen an awful lot of change. This college has grown up a lot. We'll celebrate our 50th year in two years, but, so you've been here for well over half of the college's existence, and we've changed a lot during that period of time. I thank you for putting up with the current set of trustees and all the former trustees who may have challenged your patience at, at various times. But thank you very much for your service to this college and this community.
All right. And now I'd like to turn this over to Dr. Korbe.
Okay. Well, it is my pleasure to welcome and introduce you to Dr. Mickey MacLeod. He will be our Vice President of Academics in a very short period of time. And so Dr. MacLeod comes to us from Blue River Community College, where he is currently the Dean of Instruction. And so if you would like to come to the podium and say just a few words, we'd be happy to.
Well, thank you for having me. I would like to thank the trustees for offering me this opportunity to work with this fine institution. And I would like to thank all of the faculty and staff who took the time to interview me, grilled me with a number of questions to which, some of which I had absolutely no answer to, and yet they still put up with continuing on with the conversation. But I also want to say, I think this is a job that I will enjoy doing, but I will enjoy doing it for a different reason. In the last several posts that I have filled, I have come into situations where I've had to fix the leftover burning fires from my predecessors. And I think that I'm coming in to replace somebody who is stellar. I've spent a very short time with Andy Anderson, and I had no, I didn't tell you yesterday I was going to do this, but after I walked, walked around in your wake yesterday at the K-Board meetings, Sun Tzu once said, "A good leader is benevolent and unconcerned with fame." I think that Andy exemplifies that, and so this will probably be the largest challenge of my career because I'm not coming into a position where the previous person left me lots of fires. Those are easy to fix. I'm coming into a position where the previous person did a stellar job and everybody loves them. That's always harder to come into because you have to live up to somebody who is universally loved. I think I watched him get kudos from about 30 different people yesterday in Topeka, and every other community college CAO talked about how important it was that he actually took the time to form relationships with them. These people might not like me at all, and yet I'm held to a standard that I have to try and make friends with them all because he has formed such great relationships. I look forward to looking at this institution as we move forward through the years about what we can be. Sun Tzu also said that invincibility lies in the defense, the opportunity of victory and the attack. I think we need to step forward into the next era with the same vigor that this last era was carried forward. We need to continue to attack ignorance and tolerance, all the things that college is supposed to stand against in forming a better community, better human beings, in creating the human capital that the country is built on, in particular, that Johnson County will be built on. I think Andy's left us in a great position to do that, and I hope to not mess it up too much and keep it moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome. We're looking forward to your tenure. And when you leave, we want to hear the same thing from your successors. We are excited.
Thank you, Mickey.
Thank you, Dr. MacLeod, and thanks, Judy. I'd like to recognize Dennis Arjo and Julie Haas, who co-chaired the selection committee that ultimately ended up with, with Dr. MacLeod as the new Chief Academic Officer. So thank you for your hard work. I know it's never an easy task, but it's very much appreciated. Now, Dr. MacLeod here has referenced Andy, and, and I'd like to kind of follow up on that a little bit. Mickey has big shoes to fill, and I know that's kind of a cliche statement, but it's so true. And during his time here, over the past three years as in this position, Andy's made some difficult calls, I mean, tough calls that, that he made, and that's, that's never easy. You know, he's worked tirelessly, and I mean tirelessly, and I'd like to recognize his wife Kathy in the audience because when one is put in that kind of situation, oftentimes the home front is the one that also pays a price. And I know Andy will have a lot of time to make up, I'm sure. But when it comes to Andy, he always promotes the best interests of the students. And in this, and during his time in this role, he has also promoted or advanced our mission, our academic mission. As Mickey alluded to earlier, Andy has cultivated relationships throughout the state and throughout the region in the community college world. Wherever you go, people will speak of Andy, and they'll speak of him in glowing terms. I have to say, Andy, that people are genuinely saddened by your departure, certainly up there as Mickey alluded to at the KBR yesterday, but just about everywhere in our community. So on behalf of the college, we'd like to thank you for your service to the college, which I believe is 35 years, but also your commitment to the teaching profession. Andy's a lifelong teacher. He loves to lecture. You sampled some of that earlier tonight. He has been doing that for, for 43 years. And so Andy, in your absence, I want to know, who do we turn to to collect the wisdom of Homer? So thank you, Andy Anderson. Your service to the college has been exemplary. Thank you.
Andy, would you like to say anything?
Actually, I wrote it out.
We have 50 minutes, just by chance.
I thought I might have the opportunity for another lightning round. In all seriousness, I want to thank the faculty. I want to thank the president's cabinet, who's listened to me, challenged some things along the way. The Board of Trustees, the commitment everyone brings to making the college a great place, a place that inspires learning to transform lives and strengthen communities. Serving in this role as the Vice President of Academic Affairs, I've come to appreciate the incredible complexity of a wonderful college. This place is far bigger than, than any of us actually probably realized. It's something I came to realize in Topeka after about three months, when I realized that decisions that we might make here about our own scheduling, our own, all kinds of random things turns out to affect not only ourselves, but colleges across the state. We set models that affect colleges across the nation. When we try to think through decisions, the context is greater than we, we can almost ever realize. I've come to appreciate that after, after these three and a half years, I guess. I was aware of it, but, but living it is, is very different. Most of all, I, I want to thank and, and recognize the value and the critical importance of working together. Following the daily news, one sees more and more how critical it is to strengthen communities as part of our mission. We are always better when we come together, supporting our common humanity. I believe that's the only way we can overcome our fears of failure and find our better At the end of his lectures, not mine, but at the end of his lectures, reviewing the accomplishments of Western civilization, excuse me, Sir Kenneth Clark comes to a, a few final, rather simple conclusions that summarize his personal beliefs, some beliefs that I think I share. Clark says, "I am sure that human sympathy is more valuable than ideology." He says, "I believe in courtesy, the ritual by which we avoid hurting other people's feelings by satisfying our own egos. I believe our college is at its best when we embrace these simple values, human sympathy and courtesy." And on the whole, I think we do a pretty good job of doing that. And finally, since I do have to refer to Homer, finally. Really, the whole story, since I can't quote it because the quoted is, is really over a couple thousand lines, really to, to the point of the whole story, the whole book is a tale of a homecoming. Odysseus returning to his patient, Penelope. "My wife and family have been patient of so much. I could not have served the college, taught my classes, or been a teacher without her support. I want to thank her most of all, more than I can ever express here. It is a very strange thing to think about 43 years of lectures. My students probably, I thought they were all that long." So anyway, I, I thank you for the opportunity to serve the college. This has been an incredible experience. Knowing all of you has been very much a family. Thank you.
Motion, we adjourn. I mean, it doesn't seem like we should go forward after that, Andy. Any other comments? Trustee Cross?
Yes, sir. With respect to, I think, collegiality and reaching across lines or to build bridges, when talking to a colleague of ours, trustee David Lindstrom, last month, I believe, before the management committee, with some ideas I had, he had said that some of, let's say, my criticism of the legislature, well, I think somewhat founded, they should receive some credit for doing a percentage of what we're asking them to do in helping to build our institution. He assured me they watch us. I didn't think anybody, my wife doesn't watch us. So I'm like, okay, great. If Topeka watches, then, you know, I can't be any more bear with somebody than to say, you know, we do thank you for what you do. Some of us do offer criticism as a part of a, I guess, a loyal opposition or a loyal dissent. But I just wanted to comment, with respect to the 860 allocation, what is given is appreciated, though some of us may dissent from that allocation being taken back. So I hope that reaches its mark. I wanted to echo Vice President Anderson's statements, someone who was always very candid with me, helped me learn my position, and not being just the guy firing off emails at some conference. So I appreciate his and Ms. Haas's service and everyone's service here, trustee Drummond, whose time is coming here. But I just wanted to comment on that and say thank you for everyone.
Well, I, I will offer comments about Andy, and usually I only cry during the budget. You've kind of got me messed up here, but you stepped into a position that was supposed to be interim, replacing somebody who'd been here for a long time. You didn't have to do that. I suspect you didn't want to do that. I suspect you didn't want to do it for three years, but you did it for the institution. And through all those challenges, you never lost sight of our vision. So, I want to say thank you. All right, I'm just a wimp, but I'm going to miss you, Andy. The next item on the agenda, there's no old business, does that complete your report?
That completes it.
Are you about done running people and welcoming people in? July, we're going to stop having the June meeting, because June 30th is the end of our fiscal year, and people leave, and it's too tough. Okay, no old business that I'm aware of, and no new business, so we'll move to reports from board liaisons. Dr. Arjo, you get to follow this. Dennis, is that first report from the new faculty association president? You're a philosopher, so this will be a piece of cake.
We will see. Thank you very much, an opportunity to speak. I would like to revisit a matter I brought to the board's attention last meeting by way of a statement on behalf of the faculty association regarding the college's participation with the Kansas Association of Community College Trustees. So, that statement, let me just say first, was the result of a motion made at our last general meeting in May, the FA meeting in May, and it did pass unanimously. So, I do think that speaks to the level of concern the faculty have for this matter. The background, as you know, really has to do with the matter of due process and House Bill 2531, I believe it was, and apparent cooperation or support of that bill by the KACCT. So, perhaps by way of responding to a potential question of why we're still so concerned with this in light of the master agreement amendment that took care of immediate concerns of faculty, for the most part locally, just let me say just a couple of things. So, this has to do with what is usually referred to as tenure. There's a very long history in the academic world of tenure being tied very closely to the value of academic freedom. So, we see this not so much as a policy that we might have to use any day now, but really a matter of what we value. I tend to think of it kind of like insurance. Insurance is a kind of funny thing. You spend a lot of money on something you hope you never have to use, and you do that because what you're insuring has value to you. You want to make sure that it is there, so it's expression of your valuing of this item that you're willing to pay, money that you hope to never recoup, really. So, in some respect, having this policy at the state level in law is an expression of the state of Kansas's valuing, we see, higher education, because it is an expression of the value it places on allowing faculty the space they need to do their jobs, being somewhat insulated from political, legal pressure. So, that is why we are very uncomfortable, to say the least, in supporting an organization which seems maybe more complex than we appreciate, and we'd be happy to hear more about exactly what all the KACCT does. But from our perspective, there is just a fundamental disconnection here of our participating in an organization which seems to be acting against what we see as a fundamental value in higher education. So, I just want to try to explain that side of it. With that, I'm happy to address questions or concerns that may have arisen in the past month, and have you had a chance to think about it and talk about it and look at what I gave you.
Any questions on that topic? I might, I may mention that I think I made it clear during our discussion on House Bill 2531 in our February meeting, whichever one that overflowed into the Ben Craig auditorium upstairs. 2531 was not the most of my worries with respect to legislation that is supported by some members of KACCT, statewide mill levy, loss of service areas. Those types of issues are, I think, far more dangerous to Johnson County in the long run, and I'm very pleased that your predecessor and you as part of the team, and then Dr. Sobchak and Dr. Corb and the rest of the team. I can't imagine a faculty in a better place right now with respect to academic freedom than the faculty here, because it is in state law still, and perhaps that's a reflection of the legislature realizing that value. And it's also in the master agreement. So, and frankly, I think a better format in the master agreement than is in state law. But we understand, and I think we've had those discussions about KACCT, and they will be ongoing. I don't know that we have a formal decision about how to address that, but we've certainly all seen the resolution or the letter that you wrote on behalf of the faculty association, and appreciate the issues in there, that they've been struggled with by this board for all five years that I've been on it.
Okay. I appreciate that. I mean, yeah, in a lot of ways, this goes beyond just, as I said, kind of our standing vis a vis a given policy. I think it's safe to say we're not looking at some kind of sort of witch hunt against any faculty. That's not really the issue. Because I try to frame it, even laws do a lot of things. One thing they do is teach, and they teach as an expression of what is valuable, they protect what is valuable. So, even if tangibly nothing were to change, were this to come back to the legislature next year, we would be insulated because of the master agreement. But were it to pass again, on the second try, it would still put us in a state in which, by our lights at least, higher education has become less valued. Academics, we live in a world that goes beyond just our institution. When I go to conferences, when I talk to philosophers and other philosophy programs, their colleagues, they're part of my world too. So, this is bigger than us, but I reiterate.
Trustee Cross.
Yes. Did you, Mr. President, thank you for being here today. I think you know that I opposed the House Bill 2531s and supported a lot of your movements. I do think that our relationship with KACCT, as I said at that general meeting last month, is a complicated one, and frankly, necessary one, to say the least. I just returned from Portland, Oregon. We're, among other institutions, Umpqua Community College and Virginia Tech University, in coordination with the National Association of Community College Trustees, put together one of the best collaborative efforts I've ever been a part of, either in law, politics, or anything connected to here. And while I certainly was disappointed in KACCT's stand on that particular bill, I do think that your voices were heard, and I think that this resolution is noted. But I do think, on balance, in very difficult times, KACCT is a useful organization to this entity. And I do respect you bringing the resolution forward and noting it again here tonight, but I just want to give you my thoughts and recognition of the resolution and express my general thoughts.
Thank you. Trustee Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't want to take from Dr. Arjo's time, but I will respond to his when I give my KACCT report. I do have some responses.
Okay.
Good. Appreciate that.
Thank you very much. Enjoy the summer.
Thank you, Dr.
Well, we'll see you in July.
Yep.
Johnson County Education Research Triangle, Mr. Lindstrom. I don't believe they've had a meeting since our last meeting, so we'll skip that and ask for his report next month. Kansas Association of Community College Trustees, that would be trustee Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dr. Arjo, I repeat, I appreciate your question and your representation of the faculty's position. So, I was just on an ACT conference call this afternoon prior to this meeting, and Dr. Sobchak and I attended the Kansas Association of Community College Trustees in Hutchinson this past weekend. And let me just say that while I believe this group of trustees and this administration was and is committed to having a due process procedure that not only equals what the state may have by statute, but excels, I certainly understand a faculty member's position that, well, what happens when this group of trustees changes, goes away, or changes in philosophy? And what happens when we have a different administration? So, I appreciated your insurance policy analogy. I thought it was very appropriate. So, I understand. I, for one, would not vote to leave KACCT based, though, on the due process bill. Let me explain that. There was an issue at ACT today on a national level, and there are many of them nationwide, and they don't all align with JCCC. And so, do I quit and leave because we may have a differing viewpoint on that one issue? I think not. Like trustee Cross indicated, and as Andy has said, I'm beginning to realize more and more, when I'm on this national board, the perception that the nation has of this institution, and it's very strong. I'm pleasantly surprised, as Andy has indicated, that when he first went to KBOR or Topeka, the impression that people have of this institution, which you and your colleagues have established. So, we sometimes have to think beyond an issue that may not be to our liking, yet a very emotional and sensitive one. At KACCT, we had a similar situation to the due process bill when Wichita State University wanted to merge with Wichita Technical School. KACCT opposed that bill, and as you know, there are six technical colleges in Kansas and 19 community colleges. Interestingly, the 19 community colleges provide 75% of the technical education courses in this state. And yet, we have this other board called the Technical Education Authority, TEA, which Andy is very fond of and proud of. And yet, TEA got pretty upset with the position that KACCT took, because they perceived we blocked that merger, and perhaps we did. And it wasn't so much we were against the merger, but it was the how process and how it affected community colleges in that geographic area where Wichita State wanted to now perhaps recruit students that were participants in Senate Bill 155, which affected high school recruiting, which affected community college survival. And we've got, I think, four or five community colleges in the southeast that are pretty close in proximity, and they're all competing for students. And so, we have some issues to deal now with TEA, KACCT, and KBOR in terms of how we work together. And I think, like trustee Musil, I frankly think we have bigger issues in terms of future funding and future existence with service areas and statewide mill levies. On the other hand, you're asking for a plus. We just had our first graduating class of the Kansas Leadership Institute, created and sponsored by KACCT, and I believe, Dr. Sobchak, we had 22 participants that completed. Our institution had two participants. And the idea is that as we have realized turnover in our leadership at community colleges in the last few years of our 19 community colleges, we decided we need to begin to have a program to try and provide an opportunity for young leaders in our college campuses to advance in their careers with the Leadership Institute. And we had two testimonials Friday night at our conference. And many of these participants already have their doctor's degrees, but they got involved in the Leadership Institute, and I believe I'm pretty fair, Joe, in saying that they thought the experience was a several-week experience whereby they leave like on a Thursday night or a Friday morning and spend Friday and Saturday at a college. There are a number of sessions throughout the year, and they build this cohort of colleagues that will become very unified. And they were very strong in their testimony about the experiences, they've had some speakers come in, and I forget if it was Stephanie or Melanie that spoke Friday night, and she said, "For many of us that have our doctoral programs, this experience was much more stimulating than our doctoral program." And what was exciting, seven of the 22 now have advanced positions within their colleges. One college lost two to other colleges, and yet, he was very happy about the programs. We're trying to grow leadership within our state for future leadership to stay in the state. Will they all stay? Now, if they have a job, career, I think they ought to take advantage of the best experience they have. But I believe that's one of the strengths that KACCT has provided. And so, I certainly appreciate your concern, and I understand your concern. I was a teacher once, and I had the same concerns you have about how is my superintendent of schools or my school board going to treat me if I teach a course particularly that may have some potential controversy about the subject matter? And so, then we get into all this freedom of expression, and I, for one, understand that, but don't intend to get into a, in a nutshell or in short, story tonight about that. But thank you. I hope that helps explain that there are issues that we sometimes don't agree with, but we have to work through, and hopefully, we can be inside the tent affecting those decisions rather than standing outside the tent and having something done to us. I'd remind all of us that the core values of ACT, we have six. It's boardsmanship, advocacy, student success, diversity, innovation, and service. And we spent a whole day Friday with Dr. Keith Miller from Greenville Community College Technical Center in Greenville, South Carolina, who evidently has done some good work on innovation. And if you look at Dr. Sobchak's report with the staff, we can almost break down those sections. There's certainly a section there on student success. And so, at the end of every slide, he'd ask a question, how does your college stack up in each of these areas that he talked about? And like trustee Cross, again, going to Oregon, or Andy, say, "I really feel good about how our college stacks up." And, Doctor, I appreciate your commitment to say, "Let's go from this level to the next, and we're in a new era, and how do we shift this aircraft carrier to move in a different course?" Because we have, obviously, a new world and issues to deal with, and we always can't predict when those issues are going to affect us. So, I'm sorry to take so much time on all that, but I think it explains at least my position that I want to give KACCT a chance, yet we are reviewing very closely how does a national association and a state association affect the best interests of our college? And sometimes, we have to participate for the best interests of the state organization and the best interests of the national organization, and that's why I challenge all of our trustees to please read the work that goes into that monthly report, because if we want to become better advocates of this college, there's a wealth of information right in that report that can help us. That concludes my report.
Questions for trustee Cook? I worry if we put trustee Cook and Andy Anderson together on the agenda. That was very well said, Jerry, and the point is that to be a member of ACT, we have to be a member of the sponsoring state organization, so we would lose the ability to collaborate nationally as well as collaborate statewide, and we would be outside of two tents, I think is the issue.
Well, and by the way, if we decide to drop out of KACCT in the best interest of this college, I have no problem going off the national board, because I want to do what's in the best interest of this college.
All right, we're ready to move to the foundation liaison report. Trustee Ingram.
Yes, thank you. On May 24th, the Johnson County Community College Foundation held its annual luncheon. More than 100 guests enjoyed the event, in which there was a featured surprise award called the Open Pedal. That was one of the main reasons that I wanted to provide a report today. As you know, the college has a history of having an open pedal incorporated into college logo. That little touch put there when the logo was originally conceived years ago reminds us that as long as there are new ideas to present, new challenges to accept, and new visions to pursue, this institution will always be open to them. This award honors those who embody that concept, people who are always open to new ideas and who work constantly in pursuit of greater challenges and visions. Hugh Libby is a foundation member and donor who presented this award. He shared that he was educated by the award winner about the mission and excellence of the college and the crucial role it plays in our community. In turn, this motivated him to leave a substantial gift through his estate plan to support the college. Hugh shared that it was the winner of this award who brought the college to life for me, and I'll quote, I'm sorry. It was the winner of this award who brought the college to life for me. He is a tireless advocate of Johnson County Community College, not only in our county, but in fact, all over this continent. He then presented the surprise honor to his dear friend, Dr. Jerry Cook. I wanted to make sure all of the trustees were aware of this well-deserved recognition for Jerry's service to Johnson County Community College and the entire community college system. Other highlights of the meeting included celebration of the $1 million gift to rename the Culinary Academy from the Wiley Trust, and we congratulated Joni Becker on her retirement this month, following 27 years of service to the foundation. Thank you, and congratulations.
Trustee Cook, congratulations. But you do not get to leave on June 30th, the rest of these folks. I made a mistake at the beginning of the meeting. I did not mention the open forum session. At each meeting, we have an open forum session where citizens or anybody is allowed to participate and comment. They need to- comment. They need to register before the meeting. There was nobody registered today, but I want to make sure that everybody knowing, that's watching this, understands that there is an opportunity to address the board for a limit of five minutes at the start of each meeting. And next meeting, I will make sure to call that at the right time. We're now ready for our consent agenda. The consent agenda is a grouping of items that have been reviewed in our routine nature, and they're typically considered in one motion and one vote. Any member of the board may request that a particular item be removed from the consent agenda and considered, debated, and voted upon separately. Are there any items that any board member would like to consider separately in today's consent agenda? If not, do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
Oppose no. Motion carries unanimously. We will have an executive session at the end of the meeting today, but before we get to that portion of the agenda, I'll turn it over to Dr. Sobchak.
It seems like we're having a mass exodus this evening, but when it comes to our trustees, Bob, it's, it's your last, it's your last meeting this evening. And I don't know if everyone's familiar with your incredible track record of public service that has impacted Johnson County in so many ways. MNU, Olatha, TLC, all of those organizations benefited from your leadership, as we have as well. And I, I think that I'll always remember you, and you're pounding on the word relevance, which is so important in today's higher ed world, the importance of organizations of colleges being relevant as to how they serve their students in the community. So, on behalf of, of the faculty, the staff, and everyone who works here, Bob, thank you for your leadership and for your contributions during your time here on the board. It's very much appreciated. Thank you.
Would you like to comment? Dr. Drummond?
Well, thank you so very much. It's been a very significant honor for me. This is in many ways a capstone of my career. I started my career in education when I was 22 years old, trying to teach some sweat hogs, government, and history, none of which they had at least a bit of interest in. And from that time on, as a student teacher and then a teacher, I've spent the last 45 years in education of some sort in some way. And I've just had the privilege and the honor to be able to be in a lot of different venues and be involved in education from every level possible, and possible to me, that is. And I'm just very thankful to have that privilege. And now that I'm a grandfather six times, it's time that I focus my education on grandchildren. And before I left tonight to come here, three of my granddaughters, who live around the next cul-de-sac, just as I was leaving, ran over to our house and to tell you, you know, the level of life that I live now is they wanted to borrow half a dozen eggs. So, they could help their mom make a cobbler that I hope they have a bite of one day. So, that's where I'll be spending a lot of the rest of my life, trying to provide education for my grandchildren and other grandchildren, I think, that I come across. And when you're with one grandchild, you're with a whole neighborhood of grandchildren. And so, this, this experience here has been the capstone of my education career. Not that I'm going to kind of crawl in a corner and not do anything, but certainly be focusing more on the local level instead of the county-wide level and the district level and things like that. But to have the opportunity and the privilege to serve with the trustees around the stable, and some of the trustees have graduated like I did, and then to work with the faculty of the administration that I've had an opportunity to do the past seven years, has been a real thrill, a real thrill for me. And to be able to see community college continue to raise its standards and to serve as many students as they can, and to continue to try to find new ways to serve the underserved student and the students that could be here that aren't here. And that's always been my passion, and we have, as a community college, have become very successful at that. But until we have all of them here, we're not successful. So, my challenge to myself and to you is, let's keep being creative. Let's keep being innovative. Let's find ways for the first-generation kids and adults to experience Johnson County Community College, because as all of you know, it's transformational. Whether they're 33 years old or whether they're a 17-year-old in our, in our College Now program, it's transformational, and it's, it's a great beginning for all of these students. And the work that you have done and you'll continue to do will be of great consequence to our, to our county in the days ahead. So, thank you for the privilege and the opportunity to work with you. I occasionally may turn you on and watch this, but I honestly can't do that until my cable company has you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But I can find you on the internet. So, thank you. It's been my privilege and honor, and we'll be thinking about you as I'm driving away, for places unknown.
Well, I would just, I said about a month ago how much I appreciated serving with you, Bob, and I would just say that I'm reminded of an interviewer that was interviewing Mother Teresa, and she, he said, "You pray a lot, don't you?" And she said, "Yes, I do, several times a day." And he said, "What do you do when you pray?" And she says, "Well, I, I mostly listen." And he said, "Well, what do you think God does when you pray?" And she says, "Well, I think he mostly listens." So, if you listen to those six grandchildren, they can teach you an awful lot. So, that's what I say.
Thank you. They already have, every day.
I, I think if you ask the majority of Johnson County, and what makes this county special, it's the educational system that's available. There are very many choices, whether it's K-12 or, or higher education. And Bob, your experience over, since you were 22 years old, as a teacher, as an administrator at Mid-American Nazarene, on the Olatha School Board for 20-plus years.
18.
18 years on the community college board here, I suspect we can say safely that nobody has done more for education in this county than you have. Thank you. Really seems anticlimactic to move into an executive session.
Yes.
But I know Bob wants one more before he leaves the board. So, I would like to entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the individuals to be discussed, consultation with an attorney, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship, in order to protect the privilege in the board's communications with its attorney on legal matters. The session will last one hour and, no more than one hour and 15 minutes, and no action will be taken during the session. I'd like to invite President Joe Sobchak and General Counsel Tanya Wilson to join this executive session. Do I hear such a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Cross moved, and Trustee Ingram seconded. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Oppose no. It passes unanimously. We will start the session at 6:45, which would mean we would be back here no later than 8 o'clock. Thank you all. We're back in open session at 8 o'clock after our hour and 15-minute executive session. We're going to need a little more time in executive session, so I would like to entertain a motion to go in executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the individuals to be discussed, consultation with an attorney, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship, in order to protect the privilege in the board's communications with its attorney on legal matters. This session will last no more than 30 minutes, and no action will be taken during the session. We'd like to invite Dr. Sobchak to join us in this executive session. We will return no later than 8:33. If, is there such a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Not all in favor say yes.
Yes.
Oppose no. Motion carried unanimously. We'll be back in open session no later than 8:33. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. We are back in open session at 8:33 after our executive session of 30 minutes. No action was taken. We're going to go back into executive session for no more than an additional 30 minutes. I think I'll start this one at 8:35, so if anybody needs a two-minute break to the, to the ladies' room, we can do that. I'd entertain a motion to go into executive session for personnel matters, to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the individuals to be discussed, consultation with an attorney, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship in order to protect the privilege in the board's communications with its attorney on legal matters. This session will last no more than 30 minutes. No action will be taken. I'd like to invite Dr. Sobchak and Tanya Wilson to join this session. Do I hear such a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I'm going to call Cook moved, and Drummond seconded. We'll go back into executive session at 8:35. We will be out no later than 9:05 in this room. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Opposed, motion carries. We have returned from executive session at 9 o'clock, five minutes earlier than the executive session was moved to last. Do we have a motion?
So moved, adjourned.
So moved.
I will move that we offer Dr. Sobchak the contract, of which terms we'll present to him, and what's the last part of that?
That's it.
That's it.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved by Dr. Trustee Cook and seconded by Trustee Cross to present to Dr. Sobchak a contract with the terms that will be included in the contract for him to review. Is there any further discussion? Not. All in favor say yes.
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 Oppose no. Motion carries unanimously. There's no further business. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
So moved, second, third.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Oppose no. We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.